Boomed up around again.
See those heels? Can't wear those for a while.
I know, but they're getting really bad and I'm so sad. My favorite.
I got some dislike that you can't wear.
I can't either, I just can't take it.
Well, I asked the doctor the other day, will I ever be able to wear heels again? And she looked at me like, why not? And she said, it's just gonna take a while.
Oh, even with flat shoes, I have trouble.
I don't mind the wheels, but when you wear lipstick, you look kinda...
Yes.
He's more of an auto.
Guessing Cory's sitting here.
Yeah, now, or we'll be when he gets back.
A buddy of mine just did some traveling.
Just changing everything.
Called, oh, okay.
Only because the fact is, is that the kids have been gone from school for a month or two.
Getting the word out.
They don't have, yeah, and there's no, they, we haven't been able to do any advertising, been able to do anything. I walked the last council meeting and was going ahead and higher, but we might not open.
Well, the governor just announced that we're just gonna open tomorrow.
That's what I heard.
We're not ready to open tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's good, I'm glad.
Yeah, it's just everything's still squishy, all the...
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, especially with the schools, because the schools were talking a long time about starting school back up again. You know, their pay per pupil per day, they lost a lot of money, you know, so. You sit, we'll put your name there. But anyway, I'll get it to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Annie, how are you?
Summer, I just realized it's 5:59, sorry guys.
A buddy of mine just sent me a picture of Times Square.
Oh, it's amazing, yeah, I've seen that. There's nothing in there, is there?
It's a vacant street.
It's so weird.
He said, he said he took a video, he was gonna send that to me, he says, "I took a video rounding the corner onto the main street," and he said, "There's just no one."
Even the Prescott Square was surreal.
Who would've thought?
Oh, today was busy.
Well, I'm saying two weeks ago.
All the Trump supporters and people, flags out there supporting Trump.
It was just so...
As far as night, though.
Oh, night.
Have you eaten at that Bill's Pizza?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, went there for a pizza, you know, eight o'clock? And it's like, full right up in front.
Can park anywhere, yeah.
Yeah, right.
It was the weirdest.
Yeah, I've got a picture of a guy riding his horse down the strip in Vegas. In the middle of the day.
We are officially recommendations now, though, so that's good.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Would you join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Who do we have on this street?
Jack, maybe?
Yep, there's Jack, Jack.
Jeff?
There's Andrew.
Hey, Jeff!
And Andrew, okay, good.
What's happening?
How's your back?
It's so nice without you not here.
It's good for an old feller, not too good for a young guy like me.
Okay. I knew I'd get a comeback. Okay, can we have roll call, or no, you're busy?
I'm gonna try and turn this up.
Am I hiding off camera? That would be so awesome.
No!
I see you.
All right. Quit getting hurt, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
The doctor did tell him to start dialing it down.
They seen a hospital?
No.
Just the home? Just the home.
Just having trouble getting it out of his trunk.
Whenever you're ready, we'll do roll call.
All righty, here we go. Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Best.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Who is reporting remotely, and Mayor Croft.
Here.
And then our town attorney is also present remotely.
All right. We have introductions, presentations, and proclamations. Presentation by Ron and Sherri Romly regarding funding for Yalapai Regional Transit. Mr. Duffy, you wanna introduce, is that your issue or...
Well, I'll be happy to introduce Mr. Romly, of course, Romly, because...
We don't know him, we've never seen him before.
Mayor, council, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Ron Romly, for Yalapai Regional Transit, and he has, he'd like to discuss a proposal.
None. He'd like to discuss a proposal for this budget year.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Pull your mic back, Romly. Can you hear me now? Good evening, mayor and council, my name is Ron Romly, I am the founder and the chairman of the board.
Ron.
The mics will only be going through our access TV. His audio for the webinar will be taken in through the mics and the camera. This is the phone there. So it won't be going through a speaker, okay?
Yeah, just speak a lot.
Okay, I'm not gonna start this over again.
Sorry, Ron.
Anyway, I'm the founder and the chairman of the board of Yalapai Regional Transit. I wanna thank you for inviting me here tonight. Uh, I do, I did have a PowerPoint, but because of all the webinars I've been attending, I don't quite have it finished, so you're gonna have to listen to me. Uh, these times have been very confusing, I know, to all of us. On April 20th, I sent a letter to Mayor Croft with a request, which I think you have in your packet. This letter helps illustrate how YRT has become a big factor and a player in the economics of Chino Valley. People often discount what YRT represents to the citizens of our community. And I think many of that, many of the people that need and use the bus are kind of the forgotten ones in our town. Over the past 10 years, YRT has experienced an unprecedented growth. The first year of our ridership, uh, our ridership, the first year was 165 passengers, and we were thrilled to death. That was 165 people that got to go to wherever they wanted to go, uh, that couldn't go before. This last year, we exceeded over 10,000 passengers. We are headed for another ridership, we were headed for another ridership increase, uh, of 15,000 passengers this year, but, uh, that's about 1,300 a month, but with this COVID ID, uh, COVID-19, uh, things kinda slowed down. Uh, we are very fortunate, uh, our, uh, the ridership has only dropped about 20%. Uh, most other transit agencies, like CAT over in Cottonwood, some of the others, they're down 80 to 90%. So they're really kinda struggling. Interestingly enough, the 10,000 riders from last year represented 70% of what we transported. 7,000 of those riders live in Chino Valley. We started with two nine-passenger buses, and currently we have five 14-passenger buses. Our first grant, 10 years ago, from ADOT was $150,000. Our latest two-year grant, because they've now made them two years, our latest two-year grant that we just applied for in February is 1.4 million, about 700,000 per year. That's five times larger than the very first one that we started. We get our money through the Federal Transit Administration, uh, Administration through ADOT. We have to match every dollar we get with an average of about 30%. So for example, if we spend $100 and we submit that we want $100 sent back to us, we actually only get $70. The 30% or the other $30 comes out of our pocket, or however we have to, uh, are able to come up with the money. For instance, next year's match, uh, for the $700,000 that we requested from ADOT, we have to come up with approximately $200,000 in match money. As you now, as you know, YRT is a nonprofit and must rely on donations, tax credits, sponsorships, grants, Yalapai County helps us, and volunteer hours to make our match. Last year, we applied for 75 grants, we got three. This year, with everything that's been going on lately, I'm not sure even if those three will be available. We have a difficult time planning for the future when we don't have any sustainable funding that we can really count on. When I started this company, I determined that we need, uh, to keep as much of our spending dollars here in Chino to help support our local partners. Over the years, we have complied with that thought. Last year, we spent in the town of Chino Valley approximately $315,000. Some of the examples that we spent our money on is, we have all of our buses maintained at Bob's Car, which is just south of, to, uh, to, south. We paid him $60,000. Pacific Pride upon Four North for fuel, $33,000. The Auto Spa, where we have our buses washed in detail, we spent about $6,200. Rent, $18,000. Tom's Print Shop, close to $5,000. And this, and the driver's salary is $187,000. The list goes on. IT people from Chino Valley that has a company in Chino Valley supports our entire IT system. Connie's Creations, uniforms, we've had her ever since we were Yalapai, uh, I mean, uh, Chino Valley Transit. Tumbleweed, he does our silk screening, and others. All of these companies are Chino Valley businesses that we help support. Now during the Simple Implementation Plan discussions, which was a study to get the Quad City another bus system, mainly in Prescott and Prescott Valley, during, uh, one of the open hearing discussions, all the towns in the Quad City areas agreed to an allotment from their towns to start up this system. Chino Valley's allotment was $39,000. Prescott and Prescott Valley was 100, about 170,000, and Dewey-Humboldt was around 11,000. Now I want you to understand, this was not a commitment. Basically, what was said during that time is, can you manage? Can your town manage this? And, uh, all the, all the players said yes. Based on the documents provided, and my 10 years' worth of knowledge on how a transit system works, the plan would have decimated, devastated Chino Valley's current routes. And the majority of the money would basically go to Prescott and Prescott Valley. Uh, the, and the plan eliminated all the current routes that were currently running, uh, today in Chino Valley. We have 11 bus stops with hourly service per day. We, we run that service nine hours every day, five days a week, and would sub, and would substitute the current operation with only two bus stops in Chino at three times a day. The plan also reduced the current four trips from Chino that we now run into Prescott to three trips a day. Currently, the local hourly Chino Valley bus brings people to the, our hub, what we call our hub, which is Safeway, they drop them off at Safeway, and then the bus that goes back into Prescott or Prescott Valley picks them up and takes them into Prescott or Prescott Valley. Same thing in reverse happens on their way home. We take them back to where we, we picked them up. Under the new plan, any passenger that wanted to go to Prescott had to find their own way, either the Senior Center or American Legion on Three South. Those are the only two bus stops that this plan had for Chino Valley. Uh, no hourly bus route in Chino Valley at all. Due to the elimination of 90% of what is currently provided to the townspeople of Chino Valley, AD, uh, YRT rejected the plan and pulled out. When we pulled out, the town's $39,000 obligation also disappeared. Another item that would have disappeared is the $315,000 that we spent here in Chino Valley. All the monies would be spent in Prescott or Prescott Valley. And that was because that's where they're gonna house the buses. So they, and there, what their plan is right now is to bring in, uh, a bus system that does bus work all over the country. So they have no ties here. They have no, nothing to really say, I'd rather have this than this guy, you know, like we do in Chino, we'd rather have Chino. Because this is currently saving, serving over 7,000 citizens in Chino Valley, spending over $300,000 plus or minus per year in Chino, and because the understanding to the implementation plan was 39,000 a year, YRT is requesting a commitment of an annual consideration of 35,000 a year from the town's budget to help us with the match each year in order to keep this much-needed bus system going. During this presentation, I think that we have shown to the council that YRT is a big part of this town. We live here, we shop here, and we wanna remain here in Chino Valley. With all that being said, I wanna thank you for allowing me to present, uh, this request to you, and does anybody have any questions? Yes?
Will the route still remain the same?
Uh, if we stay here? Oh, yeah. In fact, we're trying to expand. Cecilia?
I'm just gonna clarify a few things. Um, first off, I think for the council, you should know, we're gonna have this on the next council meeting for a voting session, so they're not voting tonight for funding. But secondly, um, although they had asked us through Simple that maybe we look at 39,000 funding, Frank Norrie had the, we cannot bind the council, so we had not obligated to anything. It was still in the discussion stage, so I don't want the council to think that we're, we could've done 39 or...
You're right, and that's what I tried to explain. It was just a question, do you feel comfortable with this? Because Prescott, Prescott Valley, Dewey-Humboldt, and Chino had not come at that time to any of the councils.
Right.
So there was, there's no commitment there at all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and thanks for the service you do here.
Absolutely.
And I'm proud of you, Ron. You were on time.
I know. I've been testing myself, nine minutes. You gave me 15.
Well, that was slack time. Okay, thank you, Ron, I appreciate it. That'll be on the agenda next time we discuss this. Okay, next item is call to the public. Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged, individuals are limited to speak for three minutes, the total time to call the public may be up to 30 minutes per meeting. Council action taken as we build a public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, schedule any matter for further consideration, and the decision at a later date are responding to criticism. And since we're in this, uh, for, format right now, we were asked for people to write in or call in with, uh, any comments that have, we have received none, so we have nothing for call to the public. So we'll go on to response to the public. Response to the public is an opportunity for the mayor to inform the public about how town officials address matters raised to call the public at a previous meeting. From the pre, item A, request from Be Organic Forums for 150-day waiver for the prohibition of a, from the prohibition of living in a travel trailer for farming purposes. Bless you. Response, although Mr. Bonnie Cuesta references to the vehicle as a travel trailer, the ADOT title lists it as a parked trailer. The council has no authority through the town code or the UDO to grant such a waiver, nor does staff. Additionally, Mr. Bonnie Cuesta has an active case with our code enforcement department regarding this parked trailer, so we cannot, uh, comment further on it at this time. Okay, let's go on. Current events, summaries, and reports. This item is for information only. The mayor, any council member or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events. If listed below, there may also be a presentation on information requested by the mayor and council, and questions may be answered, no action will be taken. Item A is status reports by mayor and council regarding current events. I've got a short, little presentation on what's going on with COVID-19. According to the afternoon report from Yalapai Community Health Services, there are 221 active cases of COVID-19 in Yalapai County, with four deaths and 20 recoveries. There are eight active cases in Chino Valley. The stay-at-home directive expires on May 15, so Saturday morning, there will be no stay-at-home. Nonessential retail businesses, barber shops and salons, dining restaurants, and pools and gyms may begin reopening while complying with the guidelines set by Governor Ducey and our local health officials. These guidelines may include the use of face masks, physical distancing, curbside delivery, enhanced sanitation, and by appointment only, depending on the business and type of customers they have. We are asking our citizens and visitors to continue to practice physical distance and to wear protective clothing in public places to protect themselves and their neck. That's all I have. Anyone else have anything?
I'm staying home.
You're staying home?
Nothing.
I'll pass it on to...
Can I just, real quick?
Sure.
Um, my thing is just to, um, it's not an announcement or anything, I'm just proud of our community. The kids have been through a lot. The adults staying at home with the kids have been through a lot. I'm sure the PD has been through a lot, and I'm just, uh, I'm glad that this is, we're getting some closure on this, and we can go back to living in a free society. That's all.
With some restrictions, we'll have some of those for a while until we find out that we can deal with the health side of it. And I hope that happens pretty quickly.
So from the town manager's standpoint, I have a couple departments I'd like to talk about their reopening plans. The library will be opening on Monday, they're gonna have a different schedule than they typically had, they're usually open on Saturdays, it's gonna be on Monday through Friday. For the first two weeks, uh, through the rest of May, they will limit the number of people in the library at one time, and they'll limit the amount of time you can be in there just so that they can acclimate back to some of the things that they're doing over there, um, and with their staff. But that will be on Monday morning. Um, the Senior Center will continue to do Meals on Wheels and curbside delivery through the end of May. We'll look at June 1st of trying to open it up for congregate meals and things like that over at the Senior Center at that time. Our lobbies here will remain closed, there are, we have phone numbers up there for people to call in for meetings if they want to, and we'll schedule meetings with people, but as of June 1st, those also will be open here as well as Development Services. Same thing with Development Services and Public Works, they're accepting meetings if people call in, and there's things that they need to meet face-to-face, and they will. And we're trying to do it in rooms such as this, or even the conference room where you can socially distance. Um, the PD lobby has opened this week, and they're also limiting the number of people in their lobby, which is very small, so. For the most part, we're almost all completely back to business as normal, um, but by June 1st, I think we will be almost in total. The governor today at 3 o'clock did say that pools could open starting June 13, or, I'm sorry, May 13. So our pool now is still on track to be open by June 12th, is just what the council directed. I called Cindy right afterwards, and they have done exactly what you asked, and have started moving forward as far as hiring staff, et cetera. We're hoping that, uh, we can even have a date a couple days before that to give everybody a soft opening, we'll see. I wanted to read an email from Larry Holt regarding the 9/11 memorial out at, uh, the shooting range. It's an update, since they're not able to come here and get one. They have sold 60 brick pavers, and orders continue to come in and have raised approximately $4,000. They have scheduled a workday for May 16th from 7 to 12, and encourage any council members to please stop by. They'll be clearing weeds in the ground as well as prepping and lay about 150 bricks. They will be using blank fillers that will be replaced as bricks are sold. They are also in the middle of getting bids for the storyboards, two vendors are working on these, and we should have them shortly. They're planning to hold a sunrise service for 9/11 this year. They also intend, they also plan to attend some town functions to present what we are doing to the public, as well as to sell additional bricks. Hopefully, once things have returned to normal, he will attend a meeting and give you an update.
Thank you, Larry.
Yeah, thank you for all the work they're doing out there. Um, I wanted to mention, too, that as most of you know, the police department has experienced what they think might be a double homicide. Um, they have been working with the sheriff's office, and the family have put forward some funds, and they're gonna be making a public announcement that, uh, they'll have a reward for $10,000 through Silent Witness. I think the, um, Sheriff Nasher's gonna be putting that out today, so, uh, chief wanted me to make sure I mentioned that to you. Um, and the last thing I wanted to mention was the emails that are, some of you are getting, Erin, if you want to bring that up. We've been getting a lot of these phishing emails. The mayor's, this has been going to a lot of staff, and it finally hit a couple council members. I want you to look at them after the mayor's name, there has that extension. You can click on those, and you can see that it's not from his email address here, and that's the only way you can tell, but these are all phishing ones that people, we've gotten some from staff members saying things like, "I'm right in the middle of a meeting," it's from the mayor, "I'm right in the middle of a meeting, but please call me as soon as you're free." I'm like, you guys, a mayor wouldn't text you or email you in the middle of a meeting, that's not his MO. And there's been things like, "I need some gift cards for employees, can you please call me?" And they're confused, like, why did the mayor ask me that? Um, but we've been getting them around, and now they're finally going to council members, but they can usually get into your contacts, so they're going out to who knows who. But just so you know, look at the extension on there, and you'll know it's a fake.
I enjoy talking to you, but, uh...
I, I read the whole thing after I called you and hung up.
Does anyone have any questions on the reopening plans that we're doing?
No.
That's all I have.
We'll continue this format till the end of the month, and then we'll open up the council, see how best we can do that.
Yeah, some of the boards and commissions are starting to meet. June 1st will be the next planning and zoning meeting. Cindy is gonna call a crowd board meeting, we've got, uh, the UDO subcommittee meeting's meeting, and then the town manager recruitment is meeting this week as well. So we're starting to introduce the meetings back to normal again as well.
We're gonna in that direction, we'll get it done by the end of the month. Okay. Any other questions, or reports from anybody? Okay. C, report by Finance Director Joe Duffy, recording current status of capital projects. Finance meeting, we asked Mr. Duffy to talk about where we are with the capital projects, in the moment?
Yeah, uh, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Mayor, we basically went and looked at all of our, the projects that we're currently in progress on, to see if maybe we could put grace on those and, and not do them before the end of this week. So this is a quick little summary slide.
Don't lose, don't lose Jeff.
Well, without Jeff...
That's not really nice, to say it's a quick little summary slide.
He doesn't like the slides anyway, so he doesn't need to see them.
Is Jack awake?
Estimated length, five minutes.
Oh, I'm sleeping.
Yeah, I prepared this two-slide presentation for the council, Vice Mayor Miller. Uh, so the ones we looked at were the winter park bathrooms and the water waste water building, both of those, we'd already got signed contracts, and we really believed, we looked at trying to, um, see if we could stop them in progress, but I think the progress has already started a little bit too much for us to back out of, and Frank will have a little update on that specifically. Uh, we looked at the fleet service truck, and sure enough, it was delivered just a few days later. Uh, the HIRF water truck has actually been scheduled for manufacture, it's about seven weeks out, and at this point, it's gonna be delivered to our dealer, even if we cancel, so I think we're sort of, we really should honor that contract and receive that.
I'm sorry, Joe, could you repeat that, please?
Okay, so the, the HIRF water truck has actually been scheduled to be manufactured, and so at that point, the dealer has to take delivery of that truck, no matter what. And because it was built for us, he's going to have to, um... He will have to find someone else to sell it to if we don't take delivery of it, and because it was made just for us with our specs, I think the best thing, the right thing to do is actually take delivery of the truck. We also looked at the capital improvement, the town signage project, and they'd already started the footers, and in fact, they've already installed s...
Most of them.
Most of them by, at this point in time.
Old Home Manor and one of the community centers, I've done.
Yeah, we just have a couple left. But the one thing that we did find that we could hold off on is, we did issue the RFQ for the 30% police department design, and, uh, we thought we'd bring that back to council maybe in July to look at, depending and seeing where we're at, so, to award that contract. And just a quick little reminder, and I'll get into this in our budget presentation a little deeper, we did look to our future projects, and these are the numbers in summary of what we went over with the finance department, or the finance committee. Uh, you know, we've got about $4.3 million budgeted next fiscal year, and we've already just put on hold $2.8 million of that number, so it's a substantial reduction in the amount of capital that we're even planning to do next year until we see what the effect of the revenue changes that we're gonna have, so.
Questions? Comments?
Good job, gave them that money, quick.
Save money.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, the report by Public Works Director Town Engineer regarding the status of memory park bathroom project. Park Bathroom Project. I got people standing over there.
That was supposed to be the Memory Park and the utility building.
Yeah, and utility.
Let's face it, it's the bathrooms.
That's the important one.
We have a, a meeting with the contractor this Thursday to kick things off in a big way. They're gonna, uh, contractor's moving in on June 1st. By then, the town's obligated to have the, the site cleared off and gravel put on, ready for them to, to get the concrete and the, and the footers and everything done, um, and we intend to make that. The bathrooms, the contr- the schedule actually has the, the substantial completion, everything but the punch list, by September 15th. Had a discussion with the contractor, we're gonna do everything in our power to make that September 1st-ish because of the celebrations going on. There are some, some ifs on that. Weather's a big thing, what's the weather gonna do between now and then, you can't predict that. And also, with all of the interruption of manufacturing, the delivery schedule for the fixtures themselves is depending on how manufacturing ramps back up, so, that's still in limbo of exactly even the trucking schedule and things, so, those are the two big items the contractor is saying he will do his best to, uh, try and get us at least in those bathrooms for that Labor Day weekend, but, uh, can't absolutely guarantee it, but...
That's our goal.
Yeah, we'll work as a team between the town and the contractor to, to get that done.
We'll just call and bury his house.
And the utility shops is, is virtually the same start date, they're gonna do both foundations together, uh, especially for cost savings, but it's gonna take a little longer to complete. The official completion of the bathrooms with punch list and everything is 1st of October, uh, there's always minor things. The bathroom, the utility shop, they're looking at mid-December. Um, bigger building, there's more finishing and more appliances, the lab and everything that goes in there, so, a little bit longer timeframe, but they've adjusted the schedule for the new times, and, and that's what we're looking at.
Questions? Comments?
The, uh, work we're doing on the, the maintenance building, what, what are we doing on that? What's the ground prep?
Yeah, just clearing the site, uh, digging down 18 inches per the Geotech engineers' recommendations for the foundation, and bringing back, they require fill material, best fill we can find is gravel base, so we're just filling up with gravel base to get to the bottom of the concrete and, and have that tested and ready for the contractor to sign off on when he puts the foundation together.
Okay. I, for some reason, I had, I had missed that, that last meeting, that we were responsible to, for the ground prep, and I don't know where that ever came in.
The ground prep and bringing the utilities, they're stubbing out the utilities from the foundation, and the town's responsible of connecting the utilities from there, is the two items the town's responsible for.
Okay. This will be engineered, inspected, so that, it's one of them, I, I really didn't want our fingers in anything under that building, because then it becomes whose fault is it when something goes wrong?
Right, that's why we contracted with a testing firm that actually did the foundation testing for the contractor, to do the testing on that, to make sure it meets the, the compaction requirements and is certified by the testing firm.
So, we have a CYA then, for us?
Right, it's, I, I, and forgive me, I'm not as inclined vertically as I am horizontally in construction, but I think most foundations need some sort of certified compaction for their, uh, testing anyway, when they do that, especially, we've got a little bit of clay there, so they're going down deeper than you normally would for a normal foundation. And we're just, like I said, bringing that back with gravel base to have good fill.
You were required to do that on your building.
Yeah, I was. So, it's, it's the same requirement.
Can I say something to that?
No.
Okay.
You got it. Yes. Go ahead, Jack.
The problem, the problem with us doing the subgrade is if there's any conflict at all with the, with the concrete cracking or foundation shifting or whatever, it releases the contractor from it, and it puts the blame right back on the town, whether we're certified or not.
Well, I think the horse has left the barn already, though, right, on this, so...
Unless we wanna ask the contractor to come in and change order it in there. We haven't put any gravel in there yet.
I don't, I don't look forward to giving that company any more of our money, um, I just, I just was wanting you to be aware of that fact, you know, that, that that's what will happen, because it releases him from any responsibility, because we did it, not them, certified or not.
And I know...
And then, the second thing I wanted to comment on is the bathrooms you said aren't gonna be done till October?
That's the schedule right now, but we're trying to push that up as much as we can.
So, what happened with his promise when we talked to him about that at the, the one time, that it'd be done before September?
Okay. The schedule has changed since then, people promised me a lot of things, and we're, this is the new schedule based on the delays we had with getting the contract that I talked about at last meeting.
So, it's, it's just not, it's null and void, then, if we're going with the new schedule?
That's the schedule I have.
So, I think, going forward, Jack, we, we need to put in our contracts, time deadlines, liquidated damages, just like any other, you know, construction project, but, uh...
I agree wholeheartedly, I, I would not have been in favor of doing it if it hadn't been gonna be done before the celebration, 'cause that was the whole point of pushing it so hard, to have it usable by then.
Yes, Frank and I did talk about that this morning, he's trying to work with the contractor and make sure that happens. That would be a priority for us.
Well, we are where we are, I mean, I just, I just meant for the future, you know?
All right, and to the contractors, to try and, he's not here, but to defend them a little bit maybe, that, I think that was made at that council meeting, and the contract wasn't executed for several weeks after that, so that changed things on the equation.
Well, I, I know, but I specifically asked him when they were starting and when they would be done, and he gave us dates, and, and then they hasn't hit either one, so, that's, that's where my disappointment lies.
Okay, understood.
Okay, sir, thank you.
I think we're all disappointed, I expected this to be done this summer. It's ridiculous, so, we need to look at the future, who we're gonna deal with. Any other comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's go on to consent agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine, it may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda, be considered and discussed separately. Anything on the consent agenda that we want removed? Do I have a motion?
Someone make a motion?
Sure.
Uh, I make a motion, we approve consent agenda items 6A, B, and C.
Is there a second? Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Let's go on to action items. The council may vote to recess the public meeting and hold an executive session on any item on this agenda pursuant to ARS 3843103A3 for the purpose of discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public, no action may be taken in executive session. Item A, under action items, public hearing and consideration of possible action to recommend approval of an application from Agent Politeer Wopolski for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Essent, Essence Kitchen located at 1021 North Highway 89, number 104 Chino Valley. Since Joanne isn't here, is there anybody, so, you gonna talk about this?
Um, I don't know if there's anything really to talk about, they're asking for liquor licenses.
Okay.
What is Essence Kitchen?
Essence is where, um, in the Safeway, partly.
Well, Beijing used to be.
On the corner by Safeway, in that part.
First thing I'm gonna ask, that we open the meeting for a public hearing, I need a motion for, open for a public hearing.
I would like to make a motion, we open for a public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, we are open, public hearing. Do we have any comment about this liquor license?
So, you had a question, Erin?
Oh, I just thought the restaurant was a different name, and it knows.
Yeah, they have a sign up now, so it says it there, um, I think they were scheduled to open in May, that obviously changed because of everything that was going on, um, so we got...
Anything from the public?
I make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Now I need a recommendation.
I make a recommendation to approve a new Series 12 liquor license for Essence Kitchen.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Aye.
Wow, I heard that. Motion carries. Okay, let's go to item B, public hearing and consideration for, and possible action to recommend approval of application for Enanda, but I can butcher her name, Ma Lucy Wick for a new Series 12 restaurant, restaurant liquor license for the Hitching Post BBQ located at 1120 South State Route 89, Suite 8, Chino Valley. And this is the same process, do I have a motion to hold a public hearing?
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
And do I have a second?
Go ahead, voice.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
You gotta speak ahead, Jack, you're delayed.
We're in public hearing, do we have...
I've been that way my whole life.
I won't argue that.
Yeah. Do we have any comments, questions on this public, opening this license for the Hitching Post?
I've heard a lot of great things about the Hitching Post.
Questions? Comments? Motion to close a public hearing.
I make a motion to close public hearings.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, now what you do?
Your turn, Jack.
Your turn, Jack. Make a recommendation, Jack.
What do I do now?
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval, Jack. I need approval.
I make a motion to recommend approval for a new Series 12 liquor license for Hitching Post BBQ.
Is there a second? Motion is second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All in favor.
Sorry, Jack, you're too slow.
That's okay.
I hear this voice in the background.
Is this a five-minute one?
Yeah.
Really?
C, presentation discussion regarding preliminary budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021, Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, since Vice Mayor Miller isn't here, I'll give you the abbreviated version, but I'll save the long one for the next, next meeting when we adopt the tentative budget. So, uh, uh, I do wanna thank the finance committee for, and Mayor and, and getting together and going through the budget in detail. So, in your budget, in your packet, I did put some additional items for you, I had, I did a total expenditure summary by department, which compares fiscal year 1920 and 21, 20, 2021, side by side, so you can see the changes in each department's budget. And for example, the general fund budget in total's down 12%, but we also didn't do the $2 million transfer, so with that, it's, it's actually up, but most of the departments are up just barely. We did do some personal changes, moving some people around, but our total FTE count of 98 stays at 98, so we didn't increase it, we didn't add any full-time equivalent employees this budget year. I also did a capital project summary, which I presented at one of our study sessions, I just recapped that again, and when you get to those pages, remember the blue is the, the savings that we did, is about $170,000, after the departments had already prepared their, we, we met, we had the budget that we'd normally presented to you, uh, tonight. Um, we went back and said, you know what, I reduced all the revenue estimates basically to about even, and they went back and cut, you know, just shaved their budget and saved, eliminated travel and all different things throughout each department, trying to save money, and we took them out of the budget. The yellow line items are all the things that we just put on hold until we see what the effect of our, what, how our revenues are affected this budget year. Um, and then, I, the fund balance summary for each fund, I would like to go over those really quick, especially for the general fund, capital improvement, HERF fund, just so you can understand that. And then, of course, the official state budget forms, which we will, I'll present when we adopt the tentative budget next meeting. So, overall, big picture, 30,000-foot view, last year we had a budget of 27,000, 27,976,000. This year, we've reduced it by about $3.5 million, $2 million of it is no capital, no transfer in the capital improvement fund, so we're looking at a budget, we're proposing a budget of $24,407,000. Um, of that, so, let me go through just the little fund balance worksheets for each of the major funds, and I'm sorry, I can't see across with these glasses, so I'm gonna have to read off this. So, um, last budget year, we basically budgeted to have, to spend $2,603,000 more in expenses than revenue we're bringing in. Now, what we were doing was reducing our fund balance, we took $2 million and moved it to the capital improvement fund, so we projected that we would basically reduce our fund balance by $603,000. Well, in actuality, what we've done, and this is based on my projections, is that we're only gonna reduce the general fund fund balance by $1,833,000. And this is, if you guys remember the, if folks remember the slides I did last time, this is our best estimate, and we usually do a little bit better than that. And in history, we've done $200,000 or $300,000 better than that. This budget year, it should be at least that, because we have stopped spending money wherever we can, and I even see in our weekly accounts payable checks that are going out, our cash, the amount of cash that we're sending out every day or every week in chats has reduced significantly. The department has just put the brakes on everything that they can. So, I'm thinking with this, with my projections, it's always, I over, I always over-project how much this is gonna be, and it always turns out better. So, we're gonna, we're gonna end this fiscal year in a really good position, better than we expected. One of the things I did do this year is I'm reckoning that we transferred $500,000 over to the HERF fund, the supplement, the HERF budget. Now, when we be, when we put the budget together to do this, our goal was to get a million dollars in road improvement money in the HERF budget. Not knowing what the effect of the HERF revenues are going to be and the decrease in revenues, so, we're gonna have probably between $600,000 and $800,000 to spend next year, just, just to be realistic, because we know HERF's gonna get affected. Um, so, last year, we thought the beginning fund balance was gonna be 7, 7,492,000, and basically, I'm comparing, you know, last, this 2.6 and 1.8, we ended up having 7,861,000. So, that's telling me, that's telling you, Council, like I, like I said, is that every year, we, we come out with a little bit of that in our plan at this point in time. So, once June 30 hits and the books are balanced and everything's settled, we're gonna have a little bit more money than the $1,000,000 difference. On the HERF fund, the major things is we transferred, you'll see transfers in from the general fund, we went from 100,000 to 675,000, so there's, well, and actually, it's 500,000, we planned on doing 125,000, that's why it went up so much. Which will basically give us the ability to have a million dollars in road construction, and it all depends on how the HERF revenues come out. The reality is, we won't be spending this money in probably until April or May of, of 2021, so we'll know after six months how much we'll have for road work next year. And then, the capital improvement fund, um, you can see we have the transfer in from the general fund that we budgeted for this year, that's no longer there, and we also have about a million dollars left of that money that we transo, transferred over last fiscal year. And I did a little schedule here for you. We transferred in the 2 million, we used 325,000 for the lease purchase to pay off our vehicles and equipment that we bought, we had $80,000 for the town sign project, we've allocated 750,000 as a placeholder for the gas line at Old Home Manor, uh, we had 90,000 for the rodeo drive improvements, and that's really just the engineering of that extension up rodeo drive that, uh, Civil Tech is doing right now, and then we put in 300,000 for the police department design, so, um, and so that's something we'll have to bring back to Council and have you guys can see. So, we really still haven't spent all that $2 million yet, we have about $457,000 left, and so let's see how our revenues do, but, uh, we'll continue to look for projects, and I just want Council to know that that money's still available to do whatever, you know, the economic development work and stuff that we have out there, so we have some of them left. We haven't spent nearly as much. In fact, as far as cash, we've only spent, we only spent this 90 for the rodeo drive improvements, the town sign project, and the 323, so we, you know, barely spent over half a million dollars of the $2 million. And then the last one is just the water fund. It's continuing to do pretty good. You're going to see the negative $94,000, and that's because of the building. We're doing that capital improvement, so that's going to bring down that fund balance, but they can clearly afford it. And then the same thing with, and then you'll see that the fund anticipating just revenues and expenses, it's still cash flow positive, still in the black, no longer that we don't need to supplement the water fund anymore with the general fund balance, which has been for the last couple of years. And then the sewer fund, this year, we're projecting a loss of $296,000, but that's really the capital improvement that you're doing with the building. Next year, we're looking at $475,000, and that's really because we put $500,000 in for sewer extensions that we may or may not do. Now, the sewer fund does have quite a few capital items that they're doing this year. Let me give you, let me just tell you what those are really quick. So they're doing equalizer basin or equalization basin, flow basin of 75,000, just the engineering. They had put in money for four by four pickup that we put on hold. And we have 158,000 in for drying beds, belt press of 230,000, headworks of 70,000. The belt press and headworks, we're planning on using the LITHO reserve fund money that we put away every year. We have over a little over $800,000. And that money that we put away every year is supposed to be replacing things that go wrong with the plant over time. So we've had the plant for 14 years, I believe, and these things need to be replaced. And so we basically asked LITHO, hey, we want to replace the headworks, that we want to replace the belt press, and they're like, oh, yeah. So it's more of a maintenance, repair and reserve fund that we access to. So we'll use that cash for those two items. We have $10,000 internet to the wastewater treatment plant so that they can get finally decent internet out there to run their SCADA systems so they can monitor all the alarms and everything from home, and that'll actually save on overtime of having people coming in when they get called out. And the $75,000 for the equalization basin, just the design on it. So we're continuing to do capital projects out there, improving the plant, and, you know, and all within our budget. If we do sewer line extensions, though, it's going to come out of their fund balance, out of their reserves to do those, unless we borrow, which we're not recommending for some of these smaller extensions. We need to do a substantial but bigger project.
We're required to have 707,000, right, in reserves, and we've got 7 million?
Yeah, yeah, the 707 is really cash reserves that we should have, because the 7 million includes all the capital items and all this stuff. Sort of, it's a little bit of a different number. But we are in the sewer fund, just with the buying fees and the revenues that come in are very small. I have not done the analysis whether we should reduce rates or not this fiscal year, but I'll be doing that in the next few weeks to see if this continues. And with that, we just have a few steps left. Typically, we'd have a work session between now and the next meeting, but we wanted basically condense everything into this meeting. On May 28, we adopt the tentative budget, publish it two times, and then I bring it back on June 25 for the final approval. So with that, I'm open to any questions?
Questions, comments?
I have one question, and that's if our revenues coming in are higher than what you've projected, it just going to sit there in the bank? We're not going to do any project or anything with it?
No, I think my recommendation is we go ahead and I did reduce revenues, like all our major revenues, to basically be flat. So we took, let's say, a 5% hit, and we do start budgets to accommodate that. We hope that's all that'll go down, but the budget said that that's that's all we'll do. So what I'm recommending is we adopt this budget because that'll give us the capacity if the revenues are good and they're not as bad, that we can do all, get these projects done. So we don't want to eliminate all the yellow projects I have. We're not eliminating, we're leaving them in there. We're just not going to proceed with them until we're ready to do it.
I got you now.
Yeah, so this gives us the ability to do the projects if this little hiccup or this bump that we have is short-lived and not as bad as we're projecting, because we really just don't know the timing or the amount.
Okay, Jack?
What's that?
You all right?
Oh, yeah, I just had a spasm. It's okay. Sorry.
Knowing what's going on in the world, obviously, we don't know our budget concrete.
Right.
You know, and it's a lot less than than what we think. But when we had our study session, we talked about road maintenance, that was a big one on my part, and I requested that we take a look at reducing the overall budget in the town and finding that money so that we could give ourselves, we could have ourselves our 1.6 that we need for a road management plan, a maintenance plan. I I don't see it.
Okay, so I was able to get that number up to a million dollars.
To a million. So we're still 600,000 short for our annual estimate of what it's going to take.
600,000 short, right. And when I talked with the Finance Committee, based, the majority of our budget is payroll. A huge, in our general fund budget, Corey, maybe help me with the number.
69%.
69% is payroll. And then and then and we only have like $500,000 in capital items in the general fund, which is a real small percent. So the rest of it is just services and supplies, so that's our gas, that's our everything from office supplies, our utilities, our electric. So there's not a lot of discretionary money in the general fund unless we look at payroll. And then when you look at payroll, they were looking at services. And so we want to look at eliminating a function or something that we're doing now to come up with that extra $500,000. So what I'm recommending is that we use, because of the way we conservatively budget every year, and that's a sense of what we're doing, that we use, you know, we pull down our fund balance, we we know our fund balance is going to go up, so we use the excess amount that we can peel off every year and just put that in the road. So we know, we're planning on transferring $500,000 over. If our if it looks like we don't have it, then maybe we only transfer $300,000 over. Flip side of that is if our revenues are stronger, we continue to grow, we can transfer 600 or 7,000, 100,000 for each year. So it's a step in the right direction, but without affecting personnel, I wasn't able to see that. Now, we have done, you know, some of the things, we're not filling any of our staff, open staff positions, only we have two. We're deferring the merit increases until January 1st. We'll look at it and see six months from we adopt the budget, whether we have that. I haven't imputed any of those savings, so I'm just just going to defer those, just put those on hold. And and basically just holding back on everything else we can until we know what the effects of the revenues.
Okay. Well, yeah, I just, I, you know, I'm, it's, you know, I just, I look at it and, you know, we did our study, we know where we're at, we're going downhill every year, and unless we can figure out a way to do it, we'll be back to AB.
Right. And honestly, if if we hadn't, if we hadn't gone through this pandemic and seen the effects of this and not know that.
Yeah.
I think that $500,000 could have been bigger. I would have been up here saying, you know, I think maybe we can do 750 because like, you know, everything was heading up this way.
Yeah, and I'm talking without considering that, obviously.
Right.
And I mean, I know all bets are off right now.
If we didn't, I would have come a little bit closer, but a million five was really hard. But we had also had been projecting additional HERF funds too. So with the additional HERF growth and maybe a little more, we could have been pretty close to get there.
Okay.
In other words, we'll look at it closer later on to see how this pandemic affects our budget, especially with taxes for our HERF fund. Those people are not driving what they used to. You know, right now, we're getting the income or the revenue from the grocery stores is probably up to pretty well, but what's going to happen in the next six months, we don't know.
Yeah, so my, I think our local revenues are pretty good. I, you know, if I'm going to project, I'm thinking we're going to get 99% of our local revenues because the grocery stores and the main, you know, the dollar stores and general stores, those things all do are doing fine. We've got a lot of our chain restaurants, they're going to do pretty good. It's our local restaurants that are going to see the cut. The area that I am concerned about is our construction industry and if there's been a slowdown in that. Now, the first quarter, we did, we had 44 building permits from January through March for single-family residents, which I thought was a real positive number because that's August, September, November sales tax proceeds, once they're built and we start receiving the money from those. So but I just don't know if there's, you know, a lot of commercial projects that have been put on hold or other residential projects that people have just held off for those. So that's the area that I'm a little bit concerned. My biggest concern, though, is the state share revenues because the state share sales tax particularly, you know, with, let's say, Phoenix, you know, they didn't have spring training, they didn't have all the tourism industry, they didn't have all the restaurants. That's going to affect the amount that they have to distribute to the local communities. It's not going to be huge, but it's going to, so until that economy gets rolling again and robust again, I don't think we're going to see any growth. We're going to see a decrease for a while, but I don't think we're going to see any growth in our state share revenues. And then HERF, based on gas tax, that's going to take a nice little hit here.
Yeah.
In fact, I saw a 14% decrease this month over what I was projecting. So I'll be bringing those schedules to you once I do the sales tax. So we're seeing a little bit of a dip. Now, it's not a big number. It's about 10, eight to 10,000 bucks, but it's still not a positive number.
Yeah.
And under what you projected?
Yes.
That rarely happens.
Under what the the graphs I showed you were the normal projection, if everything was normal. And so now we'll just see what happens based on that. And I'm projecting that everything will dip down and slowly start coming back.
I know you can't see into the future, but is there any indication that we still might be able to apply for that low interest loan from the police department building?
Oh, yes. The answer to that is yes. Those funds are going to be, in fact, the interest rate's probably lower now than the first you were talking about.
Fantastic.
And those funds should be available for in the foreseeable future.
And on the gas price going down, we still get our same.
Eighteen cents.
Eighteen cents. Per gallon, so. And the volume's down a little bit, as you said, but basically we get our 18 cent, just the price had come down, somebody else's, okay.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah.
But problem with everybody staying home, everything shut down.
Yeah, I got that, yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
Nope.
Can't change this.
It's your turn, Ma.
My turn?
Yeah.
Okay. Make motion that we go home.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Hey, Jack, come on in here now.
Yeah. What?
Feel better.
Feel better, Jack?
I can go home now?
Yeah. Was it a lobotomy?
Name and surgeon's over.
Good night.
Aye. And everyone, shut it off.
Yeah, thank you.
I have, I just have two things to sign.
Okay.